Okay. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the February 11th meeting of the San Mateo County Board of Supervisors. We'll begin, as always, with the Pledge of Allegiance. So if we all rise. The roll call, please.
Supervisor Groom.
Present.
Supervisor Horsley.
Here.
Supervisor Slocum. Supervisor Tissier. President Pine.
Here. Thank you. We now have our public comment. This is a time reserved for anyone who would like to address the Board on matters that are not on the agenda or are listed on the consent agenda or the county manager's report or the Board members' report. So do we, I think we have three public comments today. And the Board will first call Martin Fox.
Good morning, President Pine, members of the Board, my fellow veterans Supervisor Slocum and Mr. Walpe, Mr. Holland and Mr. Byers. Thank you for your service to the county in pledging your allegiance to our republic, which guarantees freedom of association for all, even those persons living with serious mental illness who do not believe they are sick and cannot advocate for the services that will restore their freedom. After months of study, including a fact-finding trip to Nevada County, the Los Angeles County's Department of Mental Health Director, Dr. Marvin Sotherd, is preparing to recommend fully implementing Laura's Law by providing involuntary services and dramatically expanding the number of old pilot project treatment slots to 360 because federal Medicaid reimbursement will offset some of the treatment costs and the anticipated costs to the courts have not materialized. The Alameda County Board of Supervisors is scheduled to discuss implementing Laura's Law during its regular meeting on Tuesday, February 25th. The Alameda Board of Supervisors has already received a letter that says, and I quote, "I am the president of the Alameda Police Officers Association. Our association represents 93 sworn and non-sworn members of the Alameda Police Department. As law enforcement officers, we deal with mentally ill persons on a daily basis. Many are able to lead normal lives through therapy and/or medication. However, there are a few who cannot and must rely on the help of others. As first responders, our role is limited to providing a temporary solution. Laura's Law might give us a more permanent solution. It will offer hope to those who suffer and reduce the burden on the system, which has been so helpless. I hope you will consider establishing this program to help those in need. Signed, Alan Kobyova, President, Alameda Police Officers Association. Remember Daniel Brickman's victims. Please recognize the misstatements of fact and misrepresentations of law used to cover up the intellectual and moral bankruptcy of the health system's policies denying treatment to persons living with mental illness who do not understand their need to seek treatment voluntarily and vote to implement Laura's Law." Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Mr. Roger Medler?
Yes, good morning. I've contacted Mr. Don Horsley, and Mr. Don Horsley contacted Mr. Chris Hunter, I assume, over business permits and envi-- over, not business permits, it is corruption, actually. But they gave me a thing saying permits, business permits and environmental permits are in the hands of the City of Pacifica. I'm not looking for business permits and environmental permits. So Mr., so I was sent to Mr. Beers, and Mr. Beers gave me a card, which was nice. Then he sent me to Mr. David Ship Silberman. He said he has no jurisdiction over Pacifica. He seemed to think I was still talking about violations of business permits, and I'm not. And I'm here for corruption. I keep getting continued runaround letters from the City of Pacifica. I think they need their own little rehab center now for people that go there. I never understand, they never seem to understand anything I'm asking. I have filled out two requests, nothing's done. They say, "Oh, we have your documents." And I go down to get the documents, they go, "Oh, we don't have them." I go, "Yeah," and then nothing happens. And I sent a letter to get an appointment with the city manager, and again, they still didn't understand. They sent me another, I call them runaround letters, and they didn't answer, they didn't set up an appointment, so I had to send a certified letter to them today. And they have no certificate of occupancy. This business has no certificate of occupancy. They cannot fill any of the request letter that I've asked for. That's why I'm coming to you. And they're certainly not going to file a complaint against themselves, so I can't go back, I can't go to them. And the business still operates, and it's still illegal. So I keep getting threatening letters, personal threats, and it just continues on and on. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Medler. And our final public comment is Teresa Dyer.
Good morning, county supervisors and staff. I'm going to read you a letter, and it's a voice from the dead. It's from Congressman Lantos. And then I'm going to give all of you a copy of what I've been going through these past years and how I had to do my own investigation. And the word "C" starts with corruption, and when you finally come to the end and solve it, it becomes a zero, okay? This is what he says, and this was published by Chris Hunter from the Pacifica Tribune. He has published all my letters, and he is currently writing a book about the legendary heroes of Pacifica. Editor, you recently published a letter from Teresa Dyer in which we discussed requesting assistance from me after one of my recent town meetings. I asked her to meet with Marjorie Farr, a person on my staff who is very knowledgeable and has been helpful for a great number of my constituents. Mrs. Farr met with her for some two hours and tried to be of assistance to her. The problems Mrs. Dyer raised were centered in specific cases within local and California state-administered and court jurisdictions. While discussing Ms. Dyer's concern with her considerable detail, Mrs. Farr explained that they were not matters in which members of the United States Congress have jurisdiction and that our United States California Constitution gives authority in those matters to officials of other levels and other branches of government. I very much regret that it was not within my power to help Ms. Dyer. My staff and I try to do our best for every constituent who comes to us with a problem. When the issues are within federal congressional jurisdiction, we make every effort to assist directly. When they are not, we try harder to refer individuals to other resources whom they can find meaningful help." Well, this was one letter that Chris Hunter did not print, and this was my response to the letter to Congress Lantos, that I did, I did meet with Marjorie Farr--
I'm going to need to wrap up now, the two minutes is complete.
Well, I'll just have a second.
Just a second.
That she told me at 65 to get a job, patch my roof, and hope no other attorney sues me. Well, I got news for you. I patched my roof at the tune of $21,000, which a permit was issued after the fact by the Pacifica City--
Okay, we have to wrap up now. Thank you very much, Ms. Dyer.
Okay.
If you could send us the comments, if you'd like.
There's a copy for each of you, and I'll see you at the Democrats on Saturday.
Okay. You know, I know Mr. Byers. Well, first, for members of the audience who may not be aware, the Board can't engage in discussions on these public comments, but I know, Mr. Byers, you've met with Mr. Medler, and I don't know if it'd be helpful to meet with Ms. Dyer, but I think it might be helpful with both of those individuals at some point if you provide some written documentation about what we can or cannot do. Because I, you know, it just seems like it'd be clear to have on the record, you know, what our powers are in these matters, which I don't believe are really applicable. So that would just be a suggestion for the record.
Sure. And just to clarify with regard to Mr. Medler, at your, at the last board meeting, at your request, President Pine, you asked us to follow up with Mr. Medler, and in fact, we immediately reached out to Mr. Medler, offered to meet or speak with him, but he has not followed up with us. Now, we did indicate in that email that if this is, if this, if his concern is about, is restricted to Pacifica's permitting or permitting or Pacifica's failures with respect to handling any business licensing, that is, I mean, it's pretty much axiomatic. That is within the City of Pacifica's jurisdiction, and we did indicate that. So that if his complaint was specifically about Pacifica's land use or permitting or business licensing, that is within their jurisdiction. Nevertheless, we did offer to meet, meet with him or speak with him to try to better understand his concerns, but he has not followed up with us. And we did put that in writing.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, we now move to agenda, we have to set the agenda for the, for the meeting and approve the consent items. If we could have a motion.
Mr. President, before you take the action, if I could just make a comment on item 21, which is the Information Services item for approval of contracts totaling $25 million for various projects. That's a lot of money, and Supervisor Groom and I had a conversation this morning, and I, as I have with a few other Board members regarding this topic, about how we can make sure the Board stays informed about how those projects are progressing. And so what I wanted to assure the Board this morning is I'm going to get the Controller involved to review these projects on a quarterly basis and have a report to the Board so that you could see the progress of the expenditure under those contracts.
Thank you. Thank you, Supervisor Groom, for working the county manager for those suggestions. That will be helpful.
I'll move to set the agenda and to approve consent agenda items.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. We have three presentations and awards today. The first is very bittersweet. We have a special presentation resolution to our Assistant County Manager, Dave Holland. So first, I will move that we approve this resolution, and then we'll have some comments. So a motion to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Well, let me start with a couple of comments, and I'm sure other Board members will want to make some comments as well. So, Mr. Holland, we have enjoyed having you here at San Mateo County, and we're very indebted to your contributions. Mr. Holland joined the county as the Parks Director in August of 2005, and there's a lot to be proud of in your tenure. We acquired a lot of open space, the Marota Surf, Pillar Point Bluff, Green Valley Trail. We had the Folger Stables renovation. The Bill Jean Lane Education Center was completed. We built the beautiful festival playground at Coyote Point. Among other things, you did a great job getting the grant writing up and running. It's $20 million. We'll be happy to take $20 million any time. You did some wonderful work at Hunter and Wonderland Park with the master plan and on the midcoast with recreation and mobility plans. And, you know, led the Parks Department through a difficult period when we faced the Great Recession. The parks were really stressed, and we were fortunate to have you there at that time. And then in February 11, you stepped up and joined as Assistant County Manager and served under, under two county managers, and did that very, very ably. So we're really going to miss you, and we really, you make it fun to come to work every day, you know? You're a very high social IQ, as they say, and you're very good at bringing people together, and just a pleasure to, pleasure to work with. So I thank you for all you've done, and, you know, we're really going to miss you. I yield to my other colleagues for other comments. And then we're all going to come up and give you this resolution, which we'll look forward to in a moment. Other comments?
I'm happy to jump in. You know, I know Dave had planned on spending at least 20 years here, but when he found out his golf handicap had not reached where it needed to be, he decided it might be time to retire. But Dave, the only one regret for the years you've been here is that I haven't actually played golf with you. So when you, now that you're in retirement--
We can solve that.
Anyway, you truly will be missed. You've done a great job. I've thoroughly enjoyed working with you. You've done a lot of work on the Sharp Park and all these other projects that we talked about. And, you know, everybody loves the parks, and that's really where you came from originally, is the park system and the federal government, and it shows that, you know, federal government must have done a lot of work when you were there, but now you brought so much of that here. But we really appreciate your great effort and all the great years of service here. We really will miss you, but since you don't live that far away, I hope you'll invite us all to join you on the course.
Well, I have played golf with them, and you're not missing too much.
Oh, how did that happen? How did that happen?
I'm just kidding, John.
It's the truth.
So I have obviously worked with you for a year now as a new supervisor, and a thing that I always appreciated was that for a new person who seemed to always have a lot of questions, you were always available. But even more than that, you were always very patient and calm about it all. And I'm sure that some of those questions that we talked about, you had talked about a million times. So I appreciate sort of the character that you brought to the job. The work that you did, I know this is sort of a sensitive topic, but on the WIB board was one of your favorite pastimes for the past couple of years. And certainly, we all appreciate how you've, despite the fact that the new director kind of up and left rather suddenly, kind of held it together, kept it moving forward, and I think have some solutions in place for our future after you leave, so we appreciate that. Also, from a District Four perspective, I really appreciate the work that you did on the North Fair Oaks Pocket Park issue and helping. We actually have one new park online thanks to your, your work. And soon, March 21st, I think it is, we'll have a second pocket park, hopefully, with Marlene and your help. When are you leaving? February 22nd?
Yeah, soon.
Okay.
Right after the drinking fountain.
And I was going to mention the drinking fountain, and I hope that you can make those drinking and fountain improvements before you leave for us all. That would be greatly appreciated. But quite sincerely, I'll miss having you right to my immediate left here on the dais and everything that you've done for the county and the parks and all the people of San Mateo County is sincerely appreciated.
Thanks.
I always like to call Dave the great, the great hallway diplomat. And certainly, his communication skills during a certain period of time here in Redwood City were unsurpassed in getting problems solved and getting issues delivered. And I got, I got to play golf with him a couple of times. He's, he's good. And we're--
He was probably afraid to play with me.
Gracious. Gracious.
And when, when we get the whole Sharp Park thing settled, there's going to be a little plaque somewhere with your, with your name on it, I assure you, for all the work that you have done. Thanks very much, Dave.
Well, I mean, I guess I have to say, I've also played golf with you, but only, only, they were only excursions to, to look at some of the scenic points of San Mateo County and to look at the Sharp Park and how we could possibly improve that. Yeah, yeah. And you, we spent a lot of time in the rough and, and looking at the frogs and the snakes and stuff, but, you know, I'm going to miss you both personally and professionally. And, you know, you, of course, like my colleague down at the other end, I do kind of like wandering down the halls, and you're always there and always somebody to talk to and bounce ideas off, bounce off points of view, and should I, should I not do this? And, you know, you're good at saying, "Don, don't do that." Or "Don't say that." But, you know, you're very direct, you're to the point, and you get things done. And, you know, the time that you've spent here, you've made remarkable progress for us in our Parks Department, and I know the public's going to miss you, the environmental community's going to miss you, and we'll all miss you as well. And wish you the best, actually wish you were staying longer, but I certainly understand it's time to move on and do other things with you and your family. So wish you the best. You're the greatest.
All right, we'll all gather and present the proclamation. We did actually have a red-legged frog and snake, but Marlene Finley, Marlene Finley said, "No, we cannot do that." So anyway, we're all going to give you a nice proclamation.
I have a couple of things to say, but not many. Thank you so much. That was really nice. I noticed this last line was pretty funny, and the socks, too. You know, I was thinking while I was sitting here, I was, you do such a beautiful job with the service awards that we have, and they always start off like this. "I came here and signed a contract for two years. That's all I wanted to work, and here it is almost nine years later." And, and it speaks to what an amazing place to live and work this county is. I've worked all over the U.S. over my 43 years and worked with a number of different public agencies, but I have to say, none has been rewarding or even close to working here. And that, the reason for that is it's, it's unique, but it's your leadership, I think. I have loved working with the Board and, and with the county manager. Good decisions, good focus on public needs, very professional discussion in the face of a lot of different opinions. And I think that cascades down through all the staff, the directors, with the, with the public service ethic here. You know, and I think that's a unique thing. I was sitting and thinking, you know, we get out and we talk about what's unique about San Mateo County, the culture, the landscapes, the diversity of people, almost the diversity of everything. That's all unique. And then we talk internally about how we're innovative, and there's lots of debate about that, and how collaborative we are. But I think the thing that's most unique to me for everywhere I've been is woven into the fabric of the culture of the county workforce is this incredible public service ethic. And I think you all should be very proud of that. It is unique. It's very unique to hear, and I think that comes from your leadership, comes from the leadership of the directors, and it goes down through the staff. And I've been, I've been very amazed, with all the other places I've worked, I've been very amazed by our talents and our willingness to accept and embrace public's real differences, desires, demands on us. I've enjoyed these public meetings. I've enjoyed the board meetings, some a little longer than others. But it's, it's been a great experience. I have been very proud of the leadership in the county and the work they've done on what I consider a world-class park system. That's what brought me here. I came up and visited when the job was open, and it was just, it's an amazing place. It's still an amazing place. We've had a lot of great success over the years with the park system, and it's a very dedicated park staff. My only, I only had one regret in all of this, that I didn't show up here a heck of a lot earlier and really enjoy. California's amazing. The county's amazing. I am staying around. I am available to call on. There are a couple of meetings I'll list I'm not available for. Other than that, the county has great leadership, a great future. You do a remarkable job. It, it is the finest public service team I've seen in my professional career, and for me, it's been a blessing and a privilege. And I look forward to helping out from the outside in the future. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dave, for your, for your comments. Those are, you know, very meaningful and, you know, very important to hear. You know, we, we focus a lot on things we don't do so well, and your comments are, you know, very inspiring. And we, again, we thank you for, for your great service.
And he's just my, he knows everybody in District Three. Everybody.
Okay. Our next resolution and presentation concerns the posting of public notices regarding slavery and human trafficking. Supervisor Horsley and Supervisor Tissier will handle this item.
Sure. So today, we are going to be launching a campaign to raise awareness on human trafficking, and we'll participate in a Bay Area push to publicize the National Hotline for Victims and those who suspect human trafficking. This afternoon, my colleague and I and Supervisor Horsley will be holding a press conference at the Millbury Caltrain Station because when this law came into effect, which is SB 1193 in 2012, it really required specific businesses, establishment in public areas to publish these notices so that people will, victims especially, and those that may suspect human trafficking, will know where to call and where to get some help. And we recognize that there's tens of thousands of individuals in the United States each year that had been, come here through being victims of trafficking, and California has been identified as one of the nation's top four states for trafficked persons. So today, we are going to be posting these hotlines. One is to the National Human Trafficking Resource Center. The other is to the California Coalition to Abolish Slavery. And phone numbers are such as 888KEY2FREEDOM, which also translates to 888-539-2373. So this afternoon, we will be posting those, and those will go up throughout the month, and then we will have an inspection in April to make sure that all those establishments that are required under SB 1193 have actually posted these and that people have a place to go to be saved. We also have a resolution today to present to Michael Callagie, but I'm going to go ahead, Don, if you want to say a few words before--
Yeah, I would like to say a few things about human trafficking. It really is nothing short of modern-day slavery. The victims are young, and they're, sometimes they're old, they're male, they're female, they're trafficked every day for commercial sex and labor industries. And victims of sex trafficking are working, are forced to work at massage parlors, truck stops, on the street, and in the last few years, even on the internet. Victims of labor trafficking are forced to work long hours in inhumane conditions at restaurants, factories, and even as domestic servants. And then two, two things that people don't realize is that anyone can be a victim of human trafficking regardless of your age, gender, gender or race. And victims of human trafficking can be found in every community, even San Mateo County. And we always hear about victims being trafficked into the United States from other countries, and it really is a problem, but we also have young American boys and girls being forced into, into the labor and sex trafficking all the time. So I'm really happy to support San Mateo County's efforts to fight this atrocious trafficking. And I'll give you a few facts about human trafficking. About 82% of suspected human trafficking incidents are classified as sex trafficking, and approximately 14% of suspected human trafficking incidents were classified as labor trafficking. And a surprising fact is that about 80% of confirmed victims of sex trafficking were identified as U.S. citizens.
So I'd like to ask Mike Callagie to come up front, and Don and I will present this to you, and this, Mike is leading the charge in making sure these notices get posted throughout our county. And I'll make a motion.
And I'll check it.
We have a motion in a second to approve the resolution and proclamation. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. President and the entire Board, thank you so much for identifying and supporting this very, very important issue. As indicated by the supervisor, we will be having a press conference today at 2:00 at the Millbury Train Station, where we'll have all law enforcement out there to support us. What this number represents is really hope and help to those who have been trafficked. And help is just a phone number away. It'll be stopped 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. Again, that number, 1-888-373-7888. And again, we thank you so much for your support on this very important issue.
Thank you, Mr. Callagie, and Supervisor Tissier and Horsley. I would also just add that this is a particular problem in and around San Francisco Airport, and there's been some good work done by South City in educating staff at hotels to know what to look for, and I think that's probably a good, a good technique, I'm sure, that's being expanded elsewhere. So again, thanks for bringing that forward. Good luck with the press conference. In our third presentation, which I'm bringing forward, as we did last year, is to recognize-- In our third presentation, which I'm bringing forward, as we did last year, is to recognize that February 2, 14, is Grand Jury Awareness Month. Like all counties, San Mateo has a civil grand jury. Barbara Arietta is here, she'll say a few words. And the purpose of the grand jury is just to provide another oversight into county operations. You know, given that the press isn't as robust as it once was, I do think it's important to have oversight through the grand jury. And I would like to invite Barbara Arietta to say a few words about her work and the work at the state level. And before we do that, I will make a motion to approve the resolution recognizing that this is Grand Jury Awareness Month.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We'll give you this proclamation.
Barbara Arietta, President of the San Mateo County Grand Jurors and Public Relation Representative for the State of California Grand Jurors Association. Good morning, Supervisor Pine, fellow supervisors. David, congratulations on your retirement, although to me, it's a sad occasion because Carol is absolutely correct, you are a diplomat and a gracious person to work with at all times. Mr. Maltby, Mr. Byers, good morning. And I'm here because we are having a full-out effort to recruit for the grand jury. And we are going to be having informational sessions. Our first one is going to start this afternoon at 4:30. From 4:30 to 5:30, we're going to have the Saramonte Main Library Community Room at 40 Wembley Drive in Daly City. And there, you will be able to find out about what the grand jury does, how it works, what makes a good grand juror, how and why you should apply. We are also having on Thursday, February 13, same time for all of these meetings, 4:30 to 5:30. This time, it'll be in Redwood Shores Branch Library, Room A, at 399 Marine Parkway. Next Tuesday, February 18, Foster City Community Center Port Room at 1,000 East Hillsdale Boulevard in Foster City. Thursday, February 20, we're coming to East Palo Alto at the City Council Chambers on University Avenue. Tuesday, February 25, San Mateo County Health Department, Suite 100A, South Cabrillo Highway, Half Moon Bay. And our final information session will be in San Bruno on Thursday, February 27, Veterans' Memorial Recreation Center, Room 1, Crystal Springs Avenue at Oak Avenue, 251 City Parkway. Now, for more information, please go to the San Mateo County website, or go to the San Mateo County Association of Grand Jurors website. Peninsula TV has produced an informational interview for us, which is permanently embedded now on both of those websites. It will cover everything you want to know or didn't know about the grand jury. And it'll have applications which you can download. So I thank you for your consideration, and thank you so much for your proclamation.
Thank you, Barbara, for your, all your work on this, and to try to encourage people to apply for positions on the grand jury. Everyone I've ever spoken to who's done it has said, it's a lot of work, but they really enjoyed it. And I think it also benefits the county overall because it helps, it helps grand jurors understand and become more engaged in the county for the long term. All right, so we have completed our presentations and awards, and will now move to matters set for a specified time. So the first item is a public hearing to consider an ordinance concerning the planned Colma district and the regulations that allow emergency shelters. Mr. Egomire.
Good morning, President Pine, supervisors. Oh, Mr. Maltby just left. Mr. Byers, Mr. Holland. My name is Jim Egomire, and I'm the Community Development Director for the Planning and Building Department. For your consideration this morning is a text amendment to the county zoning regulations, which would allow emergency shelters as a use by right. And this is proposed in the planned Colma zoned area, and then that must contain the high or medium-high density residential. I have a brief presentation this morning, which will include a little bit on the background, project location, that being the planned Colma area, and our ordinance language, and then our recommendation for you today. So to give you a little bit of background, back in 2007, the legislature approved a particular bill, SB 2, which essentially required local jurisdictions to designate an area within its jurisdiction that would have or allow emergency shelters as an allowed use by right. An emergency shelter is defined as housing with minimal support services for homeless persons that is limited to occupancy of six months or less by a homeless person. So from 2007, advancing forward, the county, the Planning and Building Department, in its undertaking of our housing element from 2007 to 2014, had analyzed the appropriate areas throughout our jurisdiction. What we were looking for was the opportunity for density, transportation systems, as well as parcels that would be sufficient in size for this type of use. So in turn, our housing element included language relative to a policy committing the county to pursue this zoning amendment. And then in turn, your board adopted our, and approved our housing element in 2011, as well as directed the Planning and Building Department to continue the endeavors with this particular amendment today. In addition, we have conducted environmental review, initial study, and negative declaration for this text amendment, and there were no comments that we received. We've also conducted a hearing with the Planning Commission, and in September of 2013, the Planning Commission, in looking at this particular language, is recommending that your board approve the proposed text amendment. So here's a location map, the unincorporated Colma area. You can see, I'd say, the majority of that particular area, PC/DR, is relative to the Now, there's four areas that we're proposing in our text amendment. The first one includes the definition, so we're adding the definition about an emergency shelter. The second zoning regulation that we're amending is indicating that emergency shelters are allowed by right in the high, medium-high residential zoned areas. The third area is that we're requiring parking for these types of facilities for those that are helping there. And then the fourth part is that because the planned Colma area has a design review overlay, we are indicating that shelters in that particular location would be exempt from design review. Once again, with an emphasis here to have no zoning requirements, just allowed use there, but that if you're building a new building, you would only come in for a building permit, and that would be the only ministerial action that the Planning and Building Department would undertake. So right now, if there was an existing building there that somebody wanted to convert to and provide homeless shelter services, that would be something they could do right now if you adopt this particular regulation. So it's basically eliminating any requirements for discretionary permit from planning, essentially advance to the building department if you're building a new building. So for your consideration today is the introduction of this particular ordinance, we're asking that you adopt this, and that you also certify the associated negative declaration is complete and correct. And I'm now available for any questions you may have.
I just have one. Did you notify people surrounding that area, as well as the town of Colma?
Yes, we did. We, and Daly City as well, everybody within 300 feet. To tell you the truth, it was over 300 parcels and owners within that particular location of the planned Colma area.
Okay. And just out of curiosity, how did this come about? Was this because you found a void in the zoning, or did someone approach you about wanting to put a shelter in the area?
This was in regards to, in 2007, the state legislature requiring every jurisdiction in California have a designated location for homeless shelters.
Okay, got it. You did mention that earlier. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I had a follow-up question to that, I was just trying to understand the, kind of, the policy behind this. I mean, our county has homeless shelters in various, various places in the county. So I'm not quite sure what this adds, you know.
Let me expand on your thought right there. Down in North Fair Oaks, there happens to be a shelter down there that provides this same kind of similar services. And they operate under a use permit.
Right.
So what we're doing here is we're eliminating the discretionary permit for the planned Colma area.
So I am assuming the state felt that each county needed to have some geography where you could expeditiously install a homeless shelter?
I would think that's their intentions.
Okay. Because, because, I mean, the Supervisor Tissier's question, I think, to my knowledge, we don't have any plans, though, at all, to install anything there.
No. No, this would be a private entity if they were to provide or want to provide these kinds of services and build a building or convert a building and allow this type of service.
Though it's hard to imagine a private entity providing homeless shelter. I guess it's a nonprofit, yeah.
Yeah, right.
Okay. Other questions, Supervisor Horsley?
I have a problem with the regulation exempting it from design review, and I think that by doing that, you end up just generating lots of public opposition. So, you know, I just think that's a big mistake, and so I would oppose that part of the change in the zoning regulations.
Yeah, I understand your perspective on that, and it's our just understanding and direction of council that we're to have tried to make it as a ministerial permit process.
So to ask a follow-up question, then, is that required by law to have this waiver, or can we comply with the law and not have the waiver?
Well, the unique thing about the planned Colma area is that we have this design review overlay. And so if there was another location that was a possibility that did not have design review, we wouldn't even be making a particular zoning text amendment for design review and exempting it. But because planned Colma has a design review requirement, there are a number of...
My question is, in order to comply with the state statute, can we accommodate Supervisor Horsley's view that we don't want to waive that part?
Maybe Mr. Byers can answer that question.
Yeah, and I made a, referring the question to Mr. Fox, who may be more familiar with SB 2 than I am. I, you know, the memorandum prepared for the board by Mr. Egomire certainly represents that SB 2, which is the legislation that requires that every California jurisdiction, so that would include cities as well, must have at least one identified zoning district in which emergency shelters are allowed as a ministerial use, or by right use. I suspect that while our board is very receptive to having shelters and dealing with the needs of homeless people, that's not true in every jurisdiction, of course. And so I suspect that there is a statewide problem that was being legislated to require that every jurisdiction at least have one place where, where, at least one location within their zoning authority to have an owner be allowed to have an emergency shelter by right. Ministerial permit, no design review, you know, you don't have to go into the planning department and say, I want to apply for this, it's not discretionary, it's by right. I have not read personally SB 2, but I suspect the representation in the memo is correct. Tim, I don't know if you have any more information on this particular legislation.
My understanding is that SB 2 includes language that requires that local agencies eliminate any requirement for discretionary permit. Our design review regulations are both, they can be applied as a ministerial review, an administrative review, and there are occasions where we do so. When state law requires that we can't hold a public hearing on the permit or deny the permit, we are allowed to apply objective standards to the project as it goes forward, but we're not allowed to have an up or down vote about whether or not the project goes forward. We can simply say, this building height must be taken into consideration, this parking must be provided, these exterior finishes must be included. That type of review, where it's entirely objective, there is no subjectivity whatsoever, is allowed. You could have, baked into the regulation, a requirement that an administrative process be applied to ensure that those objective standards continue to be applied in the design review district. But there cannot be a public hearing on the matter, and it has to, the agency bears a burden of showing that the standards that it's applying are entirely objective, because the state policy is that the permits be processed without any discretionary approval authority.
Mr. President, members of the board, there's one other point I think probably should be made, and that is that it's pretty hard to imagine a situation in which there would be a shelter in the unincorporated area that didn't have some sort of government assistance, probably through your board. So while the land use regulations may be pretty cut and dried, at the end of the day, the board would have to vote an appropriation probably for a shelter to operate.
Okay, so we would then have options to look at the exterior and essentially reasonable standards to fit with the community. Okay.
Supervisor Groom.
I don't know if this is going to be helpful or not, but I was on the city council when this was passed, and the League of California Cities and others tried to get a number of amendments made that would allow for design review, that would have allowed for location assistance kind of thing, and none of them were successful. And at first, the requirement was just you put it in your housing element, it didn't necessarily mean that you were going to go off and build. But as, around that time, as homelessness became a little, a little more troubling, several cities did put in homeless shelters under, and I think this act didn't take effect for two or three years, but some of the folks went and put them in, or had plans to put them in, and then managed to do the things that you could do before the law went into effect. But it was really just, I think, the state, once again, trying to help local cities with their land use elements, and trying to, you know, make us do things that we were probably ready to do anyway, but do them in a form that we would not have chosen to do.
If I could, just one quick question. Even though this is in Colma, nothing would prohibit a designation like this in the future for the North Fair Oaks area, would it?
No, it wouldn't. We could take your direction to, as we go through our zoning amendments that we're currently working on, to consider this as part of that.
Thank you.
Just one other question. Is it possible, if we cannot do design review, to write into this ordinance that there are certain review standards, that reasonable standards to fit in with a community, instead of, maybe we would waive the design review regulations, but have some, if you want to call it, ministerial regulations about the exterior fitting into a community? Is that possible, or is that...
Just unique council's thoughts on that.
In fact, the law does allow the... The law does allow the imposition of objective and, and ministerial standards.
So can we write into this ordinance some objective standards?
It's within your power to do that, so long as it remains an administrative review. And I believe there's also a requirement of the law that any standards imposed not be so onerous that they discourage the creation of homeless shelters, which, it's my understanding, it's, the intention really has more to do with appearance. And unless you, you imposed a requirement that made it cost prohibitive to open a shelter, I, I think it would be within your power to do so.
Could we put those objective standards into the ordinance?
He was mentioning...
That's gonna be tough.
Will.
Yep.
I thought I heard Mr. Agameyer say that, that Colma had a design review overlay in their PC zone. If we were to do something like that, I'd like to see what they already have, because I wouldn't want to reinvent the wheel if they have something that fits within...
We have to waive it.
You know, it might be sufficient, because they're very picky about how they design. They want it to fit into the culture of their community.
But that's what we're waiving.
No, but he said there already exists design review overlay. Does that apply to this, or no?
We're waiving it, I think.
I thought he said it applied.
Yeah, good question, though.
What I'm asking is, so can we, as part of the ordinance, adopt reasonable standards? No?
I don't know. Maybe we need to put this item off for councils for their consideration. I, I, unless, Mr. Byers, I think we need, you should bring this in conclusion. Either, either we need to have it brought back to us with something on the line Supervisor Horsley is suggesting, or we need an opinion now that that's not feasible and we should vote on it.
Yeah, I, I might suggest, given the several comments I've, I've heard today and, and some of the concerns you, that you all have about, about, about this moving forward, that we take a little more time to kind of evaluate SB two and see what, see what the options are. So that, and what, you know, that, what options you have available to you as a board to provide a little more detail here, rather than just sort of rubber stamp, you know, moving forward. So why don't, why don't we take, if we could, just take a little more time to, to evaluate that? Jim, do you have another comment?
Yeah, a suggestion by Mr. Fox was referring this back to the planning commission to work out that fine detail, and then we could then bring it back to your board.
I'm sorry, that, that, that may not be a bad idea if that's the will of the board. I will say that if the, even if the board were to make any modification today to this text amendment, by law, it would have to go back to the planning commission anyway. So that's not a bad, not a bad suggestion.
I just want, and maybe this will come back when it comes to the planning commission, if that's what we're going to do. But I, I thought I heard you say, and maybe I misunderstood, maybe that's what we're eliminating. But I thought you said that there already exists a design review overlay in Colma, in the PC zone. So that would actually apply. Is that incorrect?
So what we do have, contained in our full design review chapter, which is relative to Middlefield Road, Emerald Hills, Palomar Park, Demoshire, and Plankville, are the design review standards. I think what we really need to do is look at the mechanism for how the department could apply those ministerially.
But just to ask the question again, as written today, are we waiving those design review standards as written today?
That's correct.
Right.
Okay, that's the question I was asking.
We were saying that if you came in, that these regulations here are, you are exempt.
Okay, well, yes.
That is correct.
I believe it's the will of the board then to, let me ask, perhaps we should have the public hearing in, in any event, even though we're not taking action, or can we just not worry about that today?
I mean, that's, that's certainly, you know, up, up to you if you'd like to hear, hear what members of the public have to say thus far.
I don't suspect there's anyone here, but just in, just in case, I will open the public hearing. All right, so we're closing the public hearing. I don't know if we need a motion. I think the, I think we provided instruction. I, I'd just like to add one further comment, though. I, I just, I ordered staff and the planning commission and the board not to spend too many cycles on this, because I really think this is somewhat form over substance. We do a great job with homeless shelters. There should have been a exemption in this law for counties that were already on top of homeless. I mean, it's one thing if you're ignoring the issue, and, you know, we're not going to be building a homeless shelter there, almost highly unlikely. I, I just think we should touch, give this somewhat of a soft touch. This is not, in my opinion, worthy of a lot of time, so. Okay, then we've given you instruction.
Yes.
Thank you.
Our next item is an ordinance amending certain sections of our code pertaining to the massage business regulations. Mr. Peterson?
Good morning, President Pine, members of the board, Mr. Malte, Mr. Byers, and congratulations, Mr. Holland. Hope to see you on the water. On behalf of Sheriff Monks and Chief Fraser from the health system, I'm here to present some amendments to the San Mateo County Massage Establishment Business Licensing ordinances. In 2008, in 2011, the governor signed two different bills that took a little bit out of the massage regulations from San Mateo County and put it at the state level with the intent of providing a better service and to not only the businesses, but to the communities and the public that massage establishments provide. However, those, those legislation did allow the county retain a number of different health and safety aspects and regulations. And we needed to go into the ordinance, which at that time was fairly archaic. And we came to the board, and the board approved in 2012, I believe, a revamp of that original ordinance. Over the last 18 months, the sheriff's department, building and planning, and environmental health have been enforcing that ordinance. And we identified several areas that needed slight tweaking in order to make sure that the ordinance met the intent of both the legislature and the county board of supervisors in protecting health and safety of the communities and the public that the ordinance serves. I'm not going to go through unless it is at the desire of the board, the, in detail of the discussion. But they are listed out. Again, fairly minor tweaks in order to, for the sheriff's department, environmental health, planning and building, and the business licensing board to better enforce the ordinance. And I'm here for any questions the board may have.
I had two, two questions. The, the memo notes that the amendments exempt SFO from the ordinance operating time limitations. Oh, okay, I think, I think I may be answering my own question. Since a 24/7 operation, they can do massage at times when not normal business hours.
That's correct. The ordinance, when we made the changes originally, it was for all establishments to have an opening and closing time, so that we were not finding people getting massages at 2:00 in the morning. However, SFO, because they do get international flights 24/7, there is that desire and need. We have never had a complaint about prostitution or illicit activities at SFO. And so we feel that it was, that would be appropriate.
Yeah, if someone was in a bikini there, we'd hear about it, that's for sure. I had, I'd had one other question. There was a statement in a, in a recent story in the Daily Journal, and I think there's a reference to it in the memo too, that are there some discussions or thought underway to having some kind of prohibitions on massage parlor's in certain areas, based on geography?
So when the group was getting together to talk about these amendments, we did talk a little bit. We brushed on the zoning issue. And county council has established a meeting later in February for staff to get back together to take another look at the possibility of entering into zoning regulations where, where these facilities can be located in the county unincorporated. So yes, we are going to be looking at that further.
So there's the policy interest, and I assume this would primarily pertain to North Fair Oaks of just prohibiting, prohibiting all massage, all massage parlors?
Again, that discussion has not happened. And that's why we want to make sure we get the people, all the parties to the table, so when we have that discussion, we can really flesh it out and, and make sure we make the right decisions.
At least there's some interest in that idea, it sounds like.
That is my understanding.
Okay.
Yeah, just to follow up, President Pine, we do have a meeting established in, later this, this month with across departments, the sheriff's department, environmental health, our office, among others, to, to consider that very question about whether we ought to recommend that the board just legislate massage parlors out in certain areas of the unincorporated, of our unincorporated jurisdictions. So we're just going to start that, that kind of dialogue and just kind of see where it goes. Today, this is really, for lack of a better term, cleanup legislation. I mean, we, we get smarter all the time. Sort of the illicit establishments, they get smarter as well. So it's a bit of a, bit of a chess game, frankly. But, but I think we, we, so this is really cleanup legislation. We've identified a number of, of areas environmental health has, our office has, the sheriff's office has, that we need to sort of legislate stronger. And this, today's introduction is sort of a reflection of all those items.
Okay. President Pine, please, just make, I'm actually prepared to make a motion to approve the ordinance. But I just want to commend the sheriff's department. I know that they have done really a fabulous job of cleaning up a lot of the massage parlors that were illegal. And so I would commend them for the work that they've done. And I'm also willing to, actually, I think I will make a motion to approve the ordinance amending sections. I won't read all the sections of chapter 5.44, Massage Businesses of Title V, the Business Regulations San Mateo County Ordinance Code.
I'd second that. I'd also like to make a comment that I'm completely in agreement that we dig deeper into massage parlors and do pursue the option of closing those in certain areas where we know there's an existing problem.
Especially within distances of schools.
Yes.
Mr. Pine?
Mr. Slok.
Could I ask Dean just a question that's somewhat related? There are inspections that are made by your, your office of massage parlors. And I hear from constituents in North Fair Oaks fairly often about massage parlors and things that may or be going on there. My question is, how frequently are those inspections done?
So...
Several times a year?
Yeah, the uniqueness of this ordinance, which is quite enjoyable actually, is the fact that we have several divisions that are looking at this. And each division looks at things very, very specific items, but we also team up. So we have the sheriff's department that goes through, taking a look at certain aspects. Environmental health, which I can speak to directly, is, we have an annual inspection. Again, our focus is simply on a health and safety part of the ordinances and part of the state aspects of it too. So it's truly, so we do it annually. The sheriff does it randomly at different times. And at any point, we receive complaints. We go out on those complaints in addition to the regular inspections that we do. Those inspections are unannounced, and so the operators do not have an opportunity to prepare for our inspections.
So you inspect them once a year, as I understand it?
At a minimum, once a year. Yeah, that's correct.
Thank you.
We have a motion to second. Other comments?
I'm prepared to vote.
No further comments? Then all in favor? Aye.
I, I was going to tell a story about how we...
No, please.
But I won't do it.
I kind of liked it. Okay, never mind. Our next item is a series of actions pertaining to the Crystal Springs County Sanitation District. Mr., Mr. Porter?
Thank you, President Pine, members of the board, Mr. Holland, Mr. Malte, and Mr. Byers. The department's here before you today, acting as the Crystal Springs County Sewer District to authorize approval of a county loan for downstream improvements to the sewer system, as well as asking the governing board to enter into an agreement to authorize and allow for construction of the proposed project. This project kind of hearkens back to the 1989 four-party agreement. That agreement was put together by the city of San Mateo, Hillsborough, the district itself, as well as the county of San Mateo, because we operate the Tower Road facility, which is within the sanitary district to the upper part of the watershed. And it basically talks about how we pay for operation of joint-use facilities. That's the sewer plant itself and the transmission mains down to that sewer plant. This, this picture shows you an overview of where the different entities are and how sewage makes its way from the district down to San Mateo. So the upper right corner of this map is the wastewater treatment plant in San Mateo. The lower left-hand corner is the Crystal Springs Sewer District. So we have a sewer main that runs through our district that collects all the sewage from the district, including Tower Road. That then goes into a sewer main that runs through the town of Hillsborough. And Hillsborough also deposits sewage into that main. Then it leaves Hillsborough and goes on to a transmission main in San Mateo that takes it on to the plant. Now, the way that our calculation for payment of sewer treatment is performed, the way that it's calculated, is the difference between what we see as the El Cerrito meter, which is the, kind of the end of the line in Hillsborough. That total volume is subtracted from the volume that's coming out of our district, which is at the Crystal Springs County Sand District meter. And actually, that is the way that Hillsborough accounts for their sewage flow. We have our meter in the district, and that accounts for our sewage flow. So as, you'll, you'll begin to learn, it's a very complicated system. But we do have to pay for upgrades on the pipes that we all share. And that's really what we're talking about today. In 2009, the district, as well as San Mateo and Hillsborough, came under a cease and desist order from the Regional Water Quality Control Board. And that came about because of significant downstream overflows of the sewage system, primarily in the city of San Mateo, but also in the town of Hillsborough, where sewage was leaving the pipe and it was getting into creeks. And it was significant enough to where the regional board basically issued this cease and desist order to all three entities. You'll note that the county of San Mateo is not a part of the cease and desist. It's just the three entities that are under these requirements. And part of those requirements include having us upgrade our system to prevent sewer overflows from occurring in the future. One of the challenges that this district has is it has a small number of ratepayers. There's only 1,425 ratepayers in this district, whereas Hillsborough and San Mateo are much larger entities. And the reason why that's significant is we have very expensive improvements that have to be paid for by very few residents. So if you think about the math, if you've got a, you know, huge, a huge bill that has to be paid over a few people, it really causes sewer rates to be fairly high. And the district has been before your board on several occasions, talking about rates in these smaller districts. This is one of the driving forces for the rates within the Crystal Springs District. The CDO outlined several projects that were necessary that needed to be completed. And these, this is a summary of what they are. For what we call the short-term projects, there were really two major ones that were identified. One is about $1.8 million in capital improvements that's actually within the district boundaries. So the, the district has been before you to ask for authorization to apply for a state revolving fund loan. That is very near approval, and that will pay for those improvements. What we're here to talk about today is these downstream improvements that are really upsizing the sewer mains within the town of Hillsborough and the city of San Mateo to get that sewage down to the plant without leaving the pipe. Once that's complete, there's also long-term improvements. Within the district, as part of a condition assessment that was completed as a requirement of the CDO, we found about another $2.8 million worth of improvements that will be necessary to be completed within the district. Those range from, there are typically structural issues with the pipes. The, the pipes in this district are about 75 years old on average. So as you can imagine, they've hit the end of their useful life and they need to be replaced. The other big item for the district is with the city of San Mateo. They have a sewer plant that needs to be upgraded. They've identified roughly $98 million worth of improvements at that treatment plant. The district's share of those improvement costs is roughly 3%. So you'll see, we owe about $3 million on that. I've been in discussions with the city of San Mateo. Those improvements will likely happen over time, but they will also likely finance those improvements. $98 million is a lot of money, so they're going to finance that over time. And the impact of that is to more soften those costs to the ratepayers. So that's a good thing. So as you can see, there's roughly $16.3 million facing the district in the short term and long term that's been identified at this time. So what we're talking about today is the projects in Hillsborough and San Mateo. These need to be completed by September of 2015. And although that sounds like a long time, the Hillsborough project in particular is a two-year project. So we're coming before your board at this time to get authorization to provide funding so that this project can start, get some of the construction done this summer, and complete it by September of 2015 to avoid any penalties from the regional board. San Mateo's project will take about a year. They're putting a, what is essentially a transmission main, a force main through San Mateo. It's less complicated than Hillsborough. Hillsborough's found a lot of archaeological sites, and there's a lot of topography changes in that city. So that will be a difficult project to complete. So the amendments to the four-party agreement that we're asking your board to approve, is, we're essentially looking at amendment number three, which will fund the construction portion for the town and the city. You've already... You've already approved two amendments, one associated with design and one associated with additional environmental costs. The next slide shows a breakdown of what those costs are. Essentially, the district will be paying 37% of the projects, which amount to $9.9 million, almost $10 million. We're before you today to talk about the construction portion, which is $8.7 million. As I mentioned earlier, a small district has a very difficult time coming up with this kind of money. When we were talking with the jurisdictions over the years, it was assumed that the district would partner with either Hillsborough and San Mateo on some sort of bonding or state revolving fund loan. As discussions continued, neither Hillsborough or San Mateo wanted to partner with this district on a loan of that sort. And the reason why is because for them to do that, they would need to get a larger loan, and that would impact their borrowing ability on other types of work further down the road. So that left the district with two options. One was to look at a state revolving fund loan, which we have done for the in-district projects. We also looked at it for this project, or to look to the county for a loan. Now, for the district to qualify for a state revolving fund loan, you have to go through what's affectionately known as a credit check. And what that credit check revealed was, we are currently not bringing in enough annual revenue to qualify for the loan at the current rate amount. For us to qualify, we would have had to raise rates an additional $300 a year, which would mean that the ratepayers would see their rates increase from $1,350 a year to $1,650 a year. We felt that was a pretty enormous burden for this district, and this district has had a protest in the past, and we didn't want to risk another protest on this issue. We had been, over time, building the rates, the current rates, to be able to pay for a state revolving fund loan if we partnered with somebody or bond for it. So we had the revenue and the rate structure to be able to afford a loan. Considering what we found out from the state revolving fund loan agency, we then talked to the county about the possibility of a loan. And what is before you today is our recommendation for the county to issue a loan to the district for $8.7 million, which will cover those construction costs. As I said, the rates have already been built to be able to pay for the principal and interest, and the loan documents allow for prepayment. We actually have built in some additional amount of revenue into the payment amount so that depending on how the county rate of return goes over time, we're assured that we have money to be able to pay that loan. Or, in cases such as this year, where the rate of return is less than 1%, we can make prepayments and try and pay that loan down faster than 20 years. So this is what I just kinda talked about. This is the terms of the loan. It's a 20-year loan for $8.7 million with an allowance for prepayment. I think I covered everything there. The CDO has been a huge issue for this district, though. It has brought up costs that has really driven the rates for this district and caused us to look at merging this district with another entity that's larger. And the reason is because where I started this discussion, a very small district has a hard time paying very large bills. And it would make sense, through economies of scale, to combine this district with a larger district, and that would be the city of San Mateo. And those discussions are ongoing. We're talking with the HOA districts, but we would only suggest such a merger if it is beneficial to our residents, to our ratepayers, and if those folks within the district supported such a merger. So we're currently working with the HOAs and the city to gauge support through that process. But we will continue to operate this as a district unless we have agreement by the city and the district to move forward. We will, though, however, looking at projections, if we do stay a special independent district, we do see a need to raise rates to be able to pay for those other projects that were identified, the $3 million that we're gonna owe on the plant, as well as the $2.8 million of in-district projects that we have to get done in the next five to 10 years. Those are not built into our rate structure right now. I will mention that in terms of notification, emails were sent out to HOAs in the area. We do have a representative of the Crystal Springs County Sanitary District here. I'd like to thank Supervisor Pine's office for the help that they've given in facilitating discussions and notification with the HOA groups. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions that we may, that you might have on this issue. Thank you.
Questions from the board?
I don't have any questions. I'll make a motion, if I can read it. Unless, do we have to have a public hearing on this, or speakers? If not, I'll make a motion to.
Mr. Goodman?
To adopt the resolutions 1, 8, 1, 2, and 2B.
Second.
I just, could I ask one, just one question for council? Could you just briefly summarize what our security is for this loan?
Sure. You know, we, there is an agreement, and we do have a provision in there that essentially, I guess I'll characterize it as a second, on kind of a second, a lien, or almost like a second mortgage, if you will, I mean, think of it as a mortgage, a lien on revenues. So we, what we couldn't lien is the loan from the state. So they have first a right to revenues, and then we have a second right to revenues. So, I mean, it's really all we could, as lawyers, sort of come up with to sort of secure the loan, is to lien the revenues. So it's like a second, if you will.
All right, thank you for that background. And I'll just add a comment or two. First, I thank Ms. Porter for the very good presentation. It is a complex subject, and I think you did a nice job breaking it down. You know, secondly, we are trying our best to engage the community in the discussion or the idea of forming this subsidiary district, which is the only solution in the long run. But nonetheless, it's been slow-going. And I do have concerns, though, about the financial, the financial situation in the district is very precarious, because now there's a loan owing to the county, and, you know, other things could happen, new lawsuits, earthquakes. And when the district only has 1,400 people, you know, there's, you have to go to those 1,400 people to pay for all, for whatever new comes up. So we are, we really are on the edge of a crisis, I believe. But we'll continue our best to work with the community to see if we can get this subsidiary district formed. So we've had a motion to second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great, thank you. Okay, we're gonna move to the new and improved county manager's report.
From the old and unimproved county manager. Mr. President, members of the board, this report does attempt to go in a slightly different direction than previous reports, in that we're trying to address more policy issues in addition to just legislative issues, and to keep the board informed of actions that you've taken in the past and their status, and trying to look forward into the immediate future, future items that will be before you from a policy standpoint. First item that we wanted to address in the report was the new emergency services building that would consist of the emergency dispatch center, a new EOC, and the sheriff's patrol division. We are meeting to get final cost estimates for that, as well as initiating the office of the courts at the state level in discussions, which will be key to the timing to proceed with this project, because it will involve parking issues. The intended location will be in the parking area along Veterans and Middlefield Road that currently is designated as juror parking for the courts, which means we have to provide equivalent parking. As you can well imagine, the office of the courts is not known for its rapid pace in dealing with any of these issues. But we want to kind of proceed on two tracks to get the plans ready and construction ready to go as soon as we get a final agreement with the office of the courts. I wanted to let the board know that the district attorney's office has been recognized for their work in prosecuting wildlife, natural resource, and environmental crimes. Specifically, deputy district attorneys Todd Feinberg and Elizabeth Nardi were recognized by the association for their outstanding work in dealing with the potential, or the dealing with criminal and civil actions against commercial fishermen who unlawfully have taken marine life in the Fitzgerald Marine Reserve area. In Health and Human Services, the county was awarded a grant from the California State Department of Healthcare Services and the California Endowment of $160,000 for enhanced and increased outreach and enrollment efforts for Medi-Cal. As you know, that we will be working with the sheriff's department and Human Services Agency. This is an effort to sign up individuals in the criminal justice system, particularly in the jail, for Medi-Cal services that they would be eligible for under the new federal legislation once they are released from custody. Very high percentage of these individuals have no health insurance. They often do come to county facilities uninsured, so this should be a positive financial benefit to the county as well. Along with Supervisors Tissier and Horsley, my office has had a meeting with the Seaton Medical Center to have initial discussions regarding their strategic plan, as well as the plans of the Daughters of Charity to sell their California facilities and how that might impact our future relationship with them. I would emphasize that these are very preliminary discussions at this point. We're fully trying to understand the implications of the strategic plan. We will be further meeting with them, and my office will keep the board advised, and certainly, I anticipate that Supervisors Horsley and Tissier will continue to be involved in those discussions. Ultimately, this summer, we will be bringing a recommendation to the board regarding Measure A funds and continued funding for the Seaton system and/or potentially its successor, depending on the nature of the services provided by that successor, if and when that's known. Again, on affordable care, the Human Services Agency will be organizing and hosting a number of enrollment activities throughout the county as we approach March 31st, which is the end of the first open enrollment period. Obviously, our intention is to get everyone that potentially is qualified to enroll so that they could take advantage of the services that are available to them under ACA. Supervisor Groom hosted a strategic advisors' meeting in the city of San Mateo to discuss both the short-term and the long-term financial aspects of the plan. And I believe that the board will be seeing in the near future a report as to the initial cost estimates and even potentially some financial estimates of how the first stage of the plan will go into effect in the near future. Community services with respect to the Fitzgerald Marine Reserve, the Parks Department has received acceptance of a video that they've prepared in the San Francisco International Ocean Film Festival regarding the Fitzgerald Marine Reserve. The film will be shown at the aquarium by the bay on Pier 39 during the festival on March 5th through the 9th. It's quite an outstanding video, and it's a nice recognition for the Parks Department to have that accepted and to be shown at the festival. Parks is also in the early stages of preparing plans to manage the Cypress Forest on the bluff and the entrance of the habitat to the San Francisco Vicente Creek at the Fitzgerald Marine Reserve. Both these projects were recommended in the plan that was adopted by your board about 10 years ago, and they've been collecting public input on the proposed plans. On January 25th, there was a site visit to present information and to hear from the public. The initial public comment period is now closed. Parks is reviewing the input and working with the consultants to draft a project plan that addresses the issues identified in the meeting, and there will be additional opportunities for the public to view and comment on the proposed plan in the coming weeks. Regarding North Fair Oaks and open space planning, as Supervisor Slokum alluded to, on January 28th, approximately 40 members of the Fair Oaks community shared their thoughts about parks and recreation spaces. And that was a well-attended meeting, and I suspect Supervisor Slokum probably will be commenting more on it. Certainly, there was a common theme that people wanted safe, welcoming outdoor spaces close to their homes. We also have received over 400 surveys from residents regarding parks and open space plans. The next workshop to be held in the Fair Oaks area on the Fair Oaks Plan on the redesign of the Middlefield Road between First and Ninth Avenues, that will be in April. Also, the Fair Oaks Community Council is taking on, among their task forces, illegal dumping, and they are starting a campaign that it's not okay to dump, and working closely with our code enforcement officers in the sheriff's department and planning in order to clean up the community and to prevent future illegal dumping, or certainly at least lessen it. Concerning performance, the dashboard for the quarterly update on Measure A is being updated. It was introduced at the oversight meeting on February 4th. Thank you again to Supervisor Pine for attending that meeting and welcoming the new members of our oversight board. The department and program dashboards will be completed by the end of March, and these will be used by department heads to present their progress on the 13, 15 performance goals during your budget meeting in June and September. A Shared Vision 2025 dashboard is also being developed with input on community indicators for this dashboard, and we will be gathering information in the February-March timeframe so that visualizations can be created that reveal service gaps and improvement areas in the county. I might mention that on January 23rd, Data Innovation Day was held. The most popular item, as I suspect, if you, if I had thought about it, I would have guessed this too, was the Controller's Office new release on unclaimed check data. That drew a lot of attention, and congratulations to Bob Adler on that. With respect to upcoming events, I note that the Office of Emergency Services hosted a training session for social media and national disaster and response recovery. The Progress Seminar will be held from April 11th to 13th. If any board members are attending, be sure to get your information into the San Mateo County Chamber. Disaster Preparedness Day is coming up on June 7th, and we've already had a discussion of the human trafficking awareness campaign and the press conference to be held this afternoon. If there are any questions or comments, I'll certainly be happy to discuss them. Otherwise, we recommend acceptance of this report.
Just one question. Because of the ACA or Obamacare, do we make use of electronic home monitoring for those prisoners, especially women who have really significant medical issues? And, you know, I don't mean like the flu. I mean some significant medical issues, rather than have them in custody, and we could take advantage of the Affordable Care Act?
Through the president, as I'm sure Supervisor Horsley is aware, those issues are dealt with basically on a case-by-case basis, where there's an in-custody prisoner who can benefit from home care, perhaps even hospital care, some sort of institutional care, that we would ask, the sheriff would generally ask, that be released from custody under certain conditions to be treated in a different facility. Uh, under certain conditions to be treated in a different facility. Um, in most cases, my understanding of the history is that has been granted. I am aware of one instance, I think Supervisor Horsley may have been the sheriff where there was a.
Yeah.
Very ill inmate at Stanford University that was not released from custody and very costly case for the county. But in most instances, the court does grant that authority.
Okay.
Any other questions? Um, thank you, Mr. Moby, for this report. Uh, I learned a few things reading it, I think it's a great, great, great addition. Um, so I think it's also helpful for the public to get a broader sense of things that go on between board, board meetings. As we, you know, we, we cover a lot of material outside, outside of our meetings.
And I would be remiss if I didn't thank Mr. Wilson for his efforts in producing this report.
All right, thank you, Mr. Wilson. So uh, uh, we will move to board member reports. Did you start today, Ms. Horsley?
Uh, I just have one adjourned memory of Doris May Warden. She uh, she's a sixty-year resident of San Mateo County, she passed away surrounded by family. She was eighty-nine years of age, born in San Francisco. Um, and she graduated from Balboa High School in San Francisco. And throughout her life, she was dedicated to serving others and she worked for the San Mateo County Sheriff's Department. And served faithfully at, uh, she was, worked as a, I, I think it was a legal s- office specialist and um. We all knew her and um, yeah, after, even she, when she retired, we used to bring her back periodically as uh, extra help. She also had two sons, both of whom served honorably in the sheriff's firm, Willard was one. And um, uh, the other, George was the other. Willard was a longtime uh, K nine officer, in any case, she also served Woodside Village Church as a deacon. And she was really a very kind and very special person and uh, we will all miss her.
Thank you.
I'd like to adjourn a memory of Ruth Phillip. Longtime San Mateo resident, died uh, early in February at the age of ninety-two. She was a native of Cologne, Germany, uh, came to the United States, embraced the United States and was a passionate volunteer. Longtime volunteer for the Organization of Rehabilitation Training. And also in, in memory of Joan Deskey, who uh, is the wife of Robert Deskey. He is a, she was a longtime volunteer also after her career as a nurse. Very active in uh, in, in, in politics, very active in the community. And both she and her husband, longtime volunteers at the San Mateo County Historical Association.
I have no report today, Supervisor Tissier?
Uh, yes, I have uh, two adjourned memories. Um, the first one is for John Corcoran, he passed away on January seventh at the age of ninety-three. He was the father of Noreen, Marion, Joan Corcoran. And the grandfather of Kristen, Scott, Andrew, Lauren, Dominic, Danny, Katie and Colleen. Um, he was born in Castleman County, Kerry, Ireland. He arrived in San Francisco in nineteen fifty and met the love of his life Kathleen. They would have celebrated their sixtieth anniversary this June. He enjoyed the simple pleasures in life and lived his faith daily. He was thankful for his many blessings devoted to those he loved and always finding ways to be of service to others. And at a recent birthday celebration, he remarked, "I came to this country with fifty dollars in my pocket, but today I'm the richest man on earth." And three weeks later, his wife died, Kathleen. And um, they met uh, while dancing, it's, I can't remember the name of the club, KRB, I don't know what the old KRB, I'm not sure what that is. Uh, they were married in nineteen fifty-four. She would often say, "God knew what he was doing when he chose her, John Corcoran, even though he wasn't quite the dancer she had hoped for." And she also enjoyed the simple pleasures and babysitting her grandchildren. Um, and my sympathy goes out to their family. Also, um, just one quick announcement, we've already mentioned Disaster Preparedness Day and also the press conference this afternoon. But on um, Wednesday, February nineteenth, once again, we're, we will have the Older Driver Safety Seminar. At the Westlake Community Center in Daly City from nine to twelve. So any of you that think you need a few tips on your driving, feel free to stop by.
Thank you, no report, thank you. All right, we will adjourn into closed session. From closed session, Mr. Byers, if you could report out from our closed session?
Yes, gladly, President Pine. The board met in closed session to um, discuss and consider one um. One piece of uh, existing litigation, AJ versus City and County of San Francisco. And then also discussed um, two matters involving real property, um, but no final action was taken.
Thank you, Mr. Byers, and uh, we will now adjourn our meeting.